All the work session to order tonight. Appreciate everyone being here. Go ahead and if everyone had time to look at the agenda, any changes on that or adjustments?
For me.
Everybody fine with it? Okay. All right. On our minutes from our previous meeting, everyone's had time to look those over. Any changes or comments? Okay, put that on the consent agenda then. Personnel status, y'all want to go through that and go look down. We've had, as usual, we've had some changes in the jail. In and out.
On the parking reg, it's showing sixteen. What's?
Showing what now?
On parks and rec, head counts showing sixteen. That's.
Sixteen employees.
Ah, that's low.
I don't know why that would be on there, sixteen.
Cause you know, we only, you're what, three? We've only got, yeah, only got, and part-time too, but they may be counting the new.
Summer.
People, you know, that's down there on the concession.
It is. If you go to the detail.
Oh, that's right.
When you sign, you say the whole.
Just the people that we got the part-time.
It's the concession part-timers.
Yeah, cause you know, we changed it. Had to actually put that on the short-term, yeah. Any other questions? All right. Move down to number four. This is Board of Members and Proclamations. Four A. We have R twenty-four dash twenty-three. This is reappointment to Department of Family and Children's Services. Have you talked to Tanana anymore?
I talked.
She gonna stay on or not?
I talked to her and she was willing to retire if they could find a replacement, but she said she would stay on.
And then resign if needed.
Cause there's a requirement now in the state to be on that board, so it might be a little trickier than just.
Yeah. Well, that's good then.
Certain qualifications to be on.
Now you do, yeah. Cause it's important.
So she'll remain.
They do.
But does she want us to be actively seeking?
Well, I think so. I believe she indicated that.
So what is it?
She's trying to retire.
Is that anybody?
Again.
Like.
Uh, I don't have those.
We'll get the requirements, get them to you.
After this, yeah. Of course, the Citizen of Dade County and then something.
Okay.
Like affiliated with education or the community or, there's like two or three different things.
Her replacement would have to be, cause the East Farns got a different, but Tanana was a representative for, you know, the education area, you know? So, but we'll get all that, you know, but it, she was hard, it was hard to feel like when we came up with Batina, you know, she was just perfect for it.
Oh, I bet. Yeah, she's great.
Maybe by the next meeting we'll have. And also, I think you emailed her.
Kathy.
Kathy and she's gonna kind of get us, yeah.
She's working on it.
All right. Let's move down to four B. That's R dash twenty-five dash twenty-three. This is our reappointment of a member to Historical Preservation Mason, which is Sarah Moore. And Sarah does a good job. She's really involved.
She don't miss a meeting rare to miss a meeting.
Yeah, and so everybody fine with that?
Yes.
Keeping her on, okay. Move down to four C. This is R twenty-seven dash twenty-three, reappointment to our Public Library Board of Trustees, Miss Lisa Cagle. And there again, she's a good board member. I tell you, she's, you know, she's really good. And everybody fine with Lisa?
Yes.
Serves on our industrial development board too, right?
Do what now?
Serves on our industrial development board.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's. Yeah, authority.
Yeah.
Yeah, the industrial development board. The, move down to four D. This is R dash twenty-eight dash twenty-three, appointment to the Public Library Board of Trustees to fulfill the unexpired term of Tad Everett. This is by appointment of Steve Forster. So Steve will be taking Tad's place. You know him? You know Steve? I mean, I know Tad, but.
I know Tad.
And Steve Forster is the one I've known, right on the mountain.
And Lisa Eubanks is here, if you want to ask her about that, but, but that's right. Tad is.
You know.
Tad is resign, or resigning or resigned or?
Yeah, Tad got really busy with family and stuff. He was asked to finish out this three-year with his gene card.
And you know Jeff? I mean, do you know?
I don't, but I know Steve. He comes and helps. He comes, he's a retired school teacher. And he comes every Tuesday and works in the history room with all of our volunteers. He's very active in the library and has a lot of, he's done a lot with the GRC, the Sparkle Society. He just did a big tour at one of his family houses.
Does he live on Lookout? Does, you know, if that's the Forster? Do you know? Do you know Mr. Atkins? You know Steve Forster?
Yes.
Okay, that's the Steve we know. I mean, that's from the mountain, right? No, I mean, you know, it's, it's just, we try to keep those people, you know, in different parts of the county, you know, and we try to, you know, for, from Lookout or whatever. So that's good. That worked out. All right, good enough then. Everybody fine with that?
Yes.
Let's put him on the consent agenda there. Okay, this is number five, approval of sponsor of capital equipment. We got anything done on that?
We don't.
See if you can, okay.
Goodness.
All right. Number six, this is approval of our ARPA expenditure. We've got a reimbursement grant for new HVAC unit at our Dade County Public Library.
So, yeah, we've got Lisa.
Lisa, you might as well come up and talk to us a little bit about.
Yes, as you know, we've had a lot of repairs on this HVAC unit. It's, from what I've been told, we have the same unit in our LaFette Library. It was the first generation of this LG variant unit, and it's, I won't call it a lemon, it's just they've upgraded this first generation unit several times over. And anytime we have anybody come work on it, they're surprised that this unit is still operational. So in LaFette, we were able to secure a grant to replace it. We just completed that project in LaFette. It's a little bit larger project. And so we worked to secure some grant funding to help with the cost of this unit for replacing here in Dade County. And so I know Jared's been busy getting three proposals for the replacement of this unit, and it leaves all the ductwork in place. It's just putting the new units, the new air handlers, it's all very much spelled out there. And from what I can tell, the three proposals look like they were very equivalent. But I will say that the replacement in LaFette was done by Callahan, and we were very pleased. And it was an eight-week project to replace the units there, probably twice the size of this one, and they handled it so professionally. We did not have to close the library. They worked around it, and they've been the ones who've been maintaining. And every time we need a repair, they come out. They know a lot about these LG units. They know when to call LG Company in to work on them. So I would love to see Callahan get this bid, but a really important part, I don't know if it's in your notes or not, but the funds that are going to be matching for this grant are coming from our State Library Association, from the legislation. And back last year in the FY twenty-two amended budget, you know, there was so much surplus in that FY twenty-two amended budget at the legislation. They funded an extra-large dose of projects to help keep up libraries, the maintenance, repair. And we were initially approved at a fifty percent match. And then I reached out to them because I knew that they were wanting to get this money spent, and I said, well, how do you feel about a seventy-thirty match? And I got that approved. And then last week, they really need to get this money spent, and they're approving it at a hundred percent. But we were only approved at a hundred and seventy thousand, so that is the cap. So anything over that would be then what I think we're requesting from these ARPA funds, which is a really good deal, as you can see. I think that would make it fifteen thousand, fourteen thousand nine forty-six.
Any questions?
On your project over there, was there any change orders for the electrical and ceiling tile work? How much did y'all have involved in that?
None, there was nothing. The only thing that we ended up paying above and beyond was replacing ceiling tiles. We had had some that were grayed out, or there was some issues with the cold air that, that then shoots the air back out and it molded around. And so we ended up spending about fifteen hundred dollars in ceiling tiles, so like a thirty thousand square foot building. I don't know that we've noticed a lot of ceiling tiles that will need repair. We just didn't have enough attic stock. Mindy may have enough attic stock for ceiling tiles, but that was the only thing above and beyond the LaFette project.
Okay, any other questions? Cause it's a win-win for us, that's our bill.
I'm definitely good with that.
That's good. I appreciate.
Great, thank you.
All right, put that on the consent agenda. All right, number seven, historical courthouse restoration report from Mr. Jamie Bellevins. Bellevins Construction Management.
Good evening. So Cole Atkins works with us as well. He'll start coming to some of these when I'm not able to be here, so. If you don't know him, he's sitting right there. So this month, from a budget standpoint, we had two RFPs that were returned. One was millwork. We had one response on that from Architectural Services. Their proposal was six hundred forty-two thousand two oh seven. This was over our budgeted amount. We did add some additional scope to that portion of the work to try to have a more consistent finish on the wood through the space. So this includes some interior doors and some wood frames that we have to get, as well as shop finishing all of our trim work. So it'll be about as good of a finish as you can get, far superior to field finished. So I was able to reallocate some funds in the budget from other places that we had some money for these things. I was, I did have to take fifteen thousand out of contingency to balance the budget, but the overall project budget has not increased. So we're still at the original budget where we were at, but this one did require some reallocation of funds inside that budget. So nothing that I would be concerned about increasing the overall budget. We're still in good shape. We still have a healthy contingency of a hundred and five thousand on the project, so I'm, I'm very, very comfortable that we'll be good to get this thing wrapped up. So the, the second one we received or issued out was for painting. We had two contractors show up to the mandatory pre-bid for that, when only one returned a proposal. That was River City Interiors. They're already doing the framing work in the space. The painting bid came back at sixty-two thousand five hundred. And this was below the budgeted amount, so we picked up a little bit of money there. So given that, we recommend that you approve both of those RFPs. I will tell you, one of the pluses with Architectural Services is they are a large millwork company out of Chattanooga, but they have the ability to just bond it straight up, so we don't have to try to shoehorn them into any other, other avenues. So those, those are what we got in last month. So the schedule, we're still waiting on the mock-up diffuser piece to show up so that we can get that done. It's just that plaster trim ring, we don't have our hands on that yet. Once we get that, we can really start buttoning the ceiling up. We have released the company to start the, the process of remolding the, the ceiling panels. So hopefully by next month, we can have, have an idea for it, and when we'll start seeing those rolling in. The framing work is ongoing. We're, I would say we're probably ninety percent done with the framing. We've got to frame the ceiling in the kitchen and a couple other little small places that we have to frame, but for the most part, the framing's done. And a wall architectural refin will start next week, and that will be kind of our catalyst to be able to start hanging, hanging drywall and start moving forward the process. So the way it will look going forward, once we get the drywall in, then we will start running the millwork. So we will start getting, with your approval, start getting the millwork samples in and getting all the stain samples and that kind of stuff approved, so they can start running that trim work and start getting that done. We had a flooring contractor come out and look at all the existing flooring. We believe we can refinish all that existing hardwood that's in there to a level that we'll all be happy with, and I think that's probably the right decision to try to maintain as much of that original appearance as we can. The one caveat to that is there's a lot of nails in that old courtroom upstairs. I don't know who turned somebody loose with a handful of nails.
There's a lot, for sure.
So those are gonna have to be removed. The, the flooring contractor said, hey, we can take them out, but there's no way I can give you like a lump sum number. So I'm, I'm waiting on an hourly rate from him and to try to do some guesstimating to kind of figure out what kind of ballpark we're looking at. Try to take those nails out, and we'll try to get that approved, so they can start getting.
Cause the only way you can take them out is just manual.
It's gonna be a guy in there pulling them, and that's why he's like, I can't just give you a number for that. So it's gonna be an hourly thing, but I don't think it's gonna be anything crazy. So we'll try to get that information out of him and be able to present that to you next month, so we can get that done. And then that way, we'll be sitting where we need to be to start refinishing those floors.
Yeah, because if we really could put trust that they wouldn't really damage the floor, we could get a dozen or so trustees up there. And, but, you know, you, you can do, make more damage.
You gotta, yeah, make sure they don't dig in that floor real bad.
Just that, you gotta really, you know, be careful.
Yeah. I mean, the good news is, it's a good old, I won't call it hard pine, but it's a, a long-leaf pine species, it's really tight-grain, so it's, it's gonna be very durable. But we don't want to have any more.
Distressing.
Yeah, or distressing, or have to, you know, float it out with epoxy everywhere to fill this, not epoxy, but putty to fill all this stuff in. It'll look a lot better, the, the purer we can keep the wood.
What kind of nails is in the floor?
I, I don't know.
It looks like they use, like, like your nails that you used, like they used them to put down like carpet padding or something.
Yeah, it's almost like a tack.
And some of them strange, got strange heads on them. I know they were shot out of a gun, you know, of some type, but, you know, they're about, some of them are sixes, it looks like, some of them's eight.
But they're all, I mean.
I mean, they're, it's like a machine gun.
Where the lawyers sit, it is.
Yeah.
So there's not like a rhyme or reason or anything?
No.
I think it was because the floor squeaked.
That's what I was about to say.
And they put it down before they did the carpeting to keep the judge happy.
Yeah.
A judge happy. I don't know.
Some, some judge, yeah.
Okay.
So. The drain work that we've got to do on the east side there, that will start mid-July. I talked with Mike Lawson about that today. He is, that's how far out he is, so we're gonna start that mid-July, that'll get that going. So we'll work on getting mill, or the landscaping piece ready to, to issue, so that we can fall right up behind that and plant everything this fall, which is ideal time to get plantings in.
You're gonna try to utilize where the wall's busted, you think? Are you gonna be, that's good.
I think we're gonna go right up there.
Work that, good.
And what we'll do, when we put the masonry bid out, we'll just have them include that piece of the wall and get it all knocked out.
That'd be good.
By one guy.
Put it back.
So.
Be real good, yeah.
So that's, that's where we're at.
Any questions?
Sounds great.
Good job, good report. There's been a lot happening over there, you know?
We're moving.
I mean, it's, it's just amazing, you know, and it's, it's coming right along. I'm glad to see it.
Thanks, guys.
Introduce the, the other guy there, and he's.
So this is Cole Atkins. He's, he's been with us for five or six years now.
He's one of our locals.
Yeah, he's, yeah, oh yeah, he's a local guy, Dade County graduate, so unfortunately, he went to Auburn, so.
Yeah, no base project.
Almost cost him a job, but we still hired him. But he runs the day-to-day stuff over here on the courthouse anyway, so he's kind of our point guy, so he'll be able to answer any questions you got.
He comes to our Historic Preservation Committee, does a good job too, so we appreciate him.
Yep.
And you.
Absolutely. So thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yep, appreciate it. Okay, let's move down here to, wrong pager. I'm glad we got somebody that, you know, here locally that's taking care of this thing, it's running it, you know, that cares. He's a taxpayer, his family's a taxpayer, and you.
All the Bellevins is.
He, he, he watches the dollars, you know, he really does. You know, been over there a lot, and.
Good guy.
You know, which is, it's good, you know? All right, let's move down to number eight. This is agreement with Field Print Equipment Corporation. This is on our application for fingerprinting hardware and software. The judge, she's in training, she couldn't be here. I talked to her today a couple times. And this is kind of a, you know, I call it a no-brainer, it's something we gotta do. I mean, this is pertaining to, they'll be able to handle all the fingerprinting over there with their permits and all that. The, what we're filling out is actually being the responsible party for that machine that's over there. They're talking NCI, NICS or whatever machine. And it's protected by the, you know, privacy and all, because it's, it's just like they've got in, like in 911 and Sheriff's Department. And so it's a pretty lengthy application. We've got questions about it, because, you know, the, the application is asking a lot of questions. Like we are a commercial business, retail business, which we're not, but, but she assured me by Monday she would have that taken care of. The judge is telling me to simplify the application. I've already sent, I did sign a criminal history check on myself, because when the day ends, we're, we're responsible for, we're the responsible party, but it's gonna be used over there. She's the one gonna be using it. So, but if you got any questions, maybe I can answer. If not, you can talk to Judge Corr, you know.
One of the things this is for is for the gun permits too, aren't you?
That and other things that they do, like any kind of fingerprinting that they have to do in, in.
Restaurants and, so I guess my, which might be a question for her, are they, are they gonna say with what they're going to fingerprint and?
As far as what it's gonna be useful?
Yeah, like is it gonna, you know, cause we, we were kind of discussing, like if a company needs a fingerprint or background check, you know?
The sheriff, you know, they, they do, the sheriff's department, they, they do background checks for, you know, when they come in. I don't know what they charge you, I mean.
I mean, I was told that they're not doing it.
They might not, but that may be what we're doing, because they're, they're wanting to move it, everything down here.
Mr. Bradford back there to answer that question.
Yeah, I mean, I, I was told that they're not doing it.
That's why we went.
That's why we're moving it.
But here comes.
So they're not gonna do, they're not gonna do any of it then, up there, right?
And is she gonna be okay with the load?
She's allowed to handle. She's allowed to get, she's kind of allowed to get it because of the, it's all one house, one stop. They come in, you know, she hasn't got to send them up to you and go.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so basically what you're talking about, the fingerprint, where they do teaching, background checks, like that has to be fingerprinted. She's gonna start picking that up, because most of the ones we do anyway are the gun permits. So instead of us doing them, she's just switching it down to her office.
Okay.
That way, it's a one-stop place, and she takes care of all that. If it's just a simple background check with, that we run through NCIC just by name and date of birth, we still do that. So it depends on what you're needing.
But she'll have, she'll have the capabilities to do it, right? From what I understand, from reading what they sent us here, you know?
All she can do is send the fingerprints. They'll run the history and they'll send it back to her. Some people don't need that. So like if you're renting from, I think it's Auburn Ridge, may do this, well, they'll send an application. You have to sign it and ask for a background check, which is just running a name through NCIC.
Yeah.
It doesn't, I mean, it doesn't.
Y'all will do that, y'all will do the.
Yeah, we do that. And that's real quick. They just put it in the computer and it pops right up.
Yeah.
So then we sign off on it and give it right back to them, and they take it to the thing. If it's something that's gotta be fingerprinted, you know, she's gonna start doing that unless.
So it's gonna be in two different locations?
Not really. So you're either need a fingerprint or a background check's what, I guess.
Well, with our, with our poor permits, they, I mean, the county requires both fingerprints and background checks.
And that's down there.
That would be down.
And that would be.
The mountain would be down.
If it's fingerprint, it does both.
Okay.
Right.
Because fingerprint is a background check, yes.
Right.
And it takes how long?
Uh, whatever it was taking us, I would be saying.
It's pretty instant.
Okay, okay.
It's, it's not something that, it's the same thing we were doing, except for like some company bought it out.
Yeah, I knew that.
Had to redo the whole process again, and she asked, I believe, if she could do it down there, because it just makes it easier for the people applying for gun permits.
And you have the, you guys have the program?
We have the NCIC, GCIC, fingerprint machine.
Two different programs, okay.
Yeah, that's totally, that's the.
There's GCIC and NCIC.
Okay, well, I, I don't know, and I don't know what, what's been going on, but it sounds like you've had some trouble. And so Everett, I called you about a week ago?
Yeah.
A few, and he still does not have an appointment with the real estate firm that does the fingerprinting in Fort Oathor to work on Saturday. So it has been very difficult to work with this program.
We've had to send several people over.
Yeah, and it's not normally that way here. You just bring in, like, where Kerry's gonna do it, a lot of people have difficulties getting that, that number, that they make you, cause you have to go on the computer and you have to pay for your fingerprints. So once they do that, it sends them a number. When you bring that number to us, we type it in. It pulls up all their information, then we fingerprint it, click it, send it to them, and then it sends the report to whoever it's supposed to go to.
Yeah, he's still, he still don't have it, so.
So.
I, I just.
It is a new company, and that's basically, I don't know anything about them, other than, you know, what I'm telling you.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's, he's a college student, and if he doesn't work on Saturday, it's fine. But there is people out there that do work, and they need to work to feed their kids, and I just hate for it to be that big of a deal to get a poor permit to work. So that's, that's my only concern. But I don't know that we have another choice.
I think all the other choices were quite expensive.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't know that there is.
This does solve that.
Okay.
Right.
They go down there for core permits, for ABC licenses, for everything.
Yeah.
Whereas they work one over here, now they go down there.
He would have to go in and fill out his number, and if somebody like, some of the older folks, that's not real computer savvy, she's gonna be able to sit down with them, and I think she's got a computer outside her office, that she can sit down and help them fill it out. Where we didn't have that luxury. She's, she's got all that down.
Well, it's more comfortable down there.
Well, yeah, it is, cause you gotta come up there, and you gotta wait for one of our guys to get untied up, come out there and fingerprint you, so.
Yeah, that sounds good.
It will be a lot better.
Yeah, he's not computer savvy, so that's probably been. Okay, good, good. Sounds good.
All right. Any questions? All right, put that on the consent agenda. Okay, move down to number nine. This is Resolution R dash twenty-six dash twenty-three. This is our addendum to zero tolerance drug and alcohol policy for FTA employees. Dawn, you wanna go onto that?
Lamar knows more about this than anybody at the table. I can guarantee you, he's read this twice. Then talked with Patty, and then our vendor that, so.
And I talked to Robin, just. And I talked to Robin just slightly for just a moment, the only concern I had that we, was on the part forty update.
Right.
And it's on page four.
Special notes.
Was it on four?
Yeah.
Yeah, there it is. And this is only for us, uh, what they call a directly observed collection, which means they watch you urinate. Um, or give the.
Sample.
A sample. But it, it goes on and down, I'll just read it, in a circumstance when an employee is required to undergo a directly observed collection, if the donor is a transgender or non-binary individual, an oral fluid collection must be conducted. And I'd just like to see that saved for everyone. If it's, I'd like to see it just be oral testing for this directly observed collection, if we have to do that. Just have our wording to, to say it.
And the guy that does our collection.
Yeah, the collection.
Administrator, or what, I don't know what his title is, but anyway, he's the MRO, or, anyway, he's whatever. He comes and does the random drug testing here, and they talked to him this evening, he does not do, he, you know, employer could mandate that it be, what's it called, directly observed, he does not do that. They do go in a private bathroom, restroom, and, uh, so, but anyway, it does say that, but he did say you, we can add an addendum. What, how did he put it?
To just do, just to just do the oral testing of it, for every individual in this one direct observance collection.
Because we use our, we use the, um, FTA's, uh, zero drug policy for alcohol and drug testing. We have one policy, and, and that policy's not only just for FTA employees, but we use it for everybody else too. So, um, that's what he told us, he, he, he's not gonna, he has no intent to observe, and we really prefer no observing, which sounds.
But the federal government is requiring that, so I'm just saying, if they require it for these two classes of people, let's just require it in our policy for everybody.
Yes, so, the, the working in a FTA, one of these FTA policies, we don't have a whole lot of discretion for that, that's a, uh, they, they do it, we kind of have to accept what, what they propose on that, so we can't modify very much, but what you're saying, for, for all county employees to say, uh, it can be either.
For directly observed collections, we will only do oral testing.
Yeah, that way we're not undercutting anything, but us treating everybody the same.
Yeah. I think the way, I think the way it is right now, it says either or, either urine or.
Yeah, unless you're under these two classes. So I'd just like for it to say, well, just, what does it do?
Well, it goes on, on this one, it just goes on to say oral fluid testing is now, oral fluid testing is now the only acceptable method, so.
For those two.
For them too, so, we're just wanting to do it for everyone.
Okay. Okay. And we can do that, but we'd probably prefer it, I would think.
I would definitely prefer it.
Prefer higher, but. Melissa, you got any comment on it?
Um. Uh, I, I've never had a drug test done where somebody observed me, so, um.
You're missing.
So that's not, that's not, yeah, I mean. Yeah, so I, I don't, I, I really don't have, um.
Well, at the hospital, they do, you'd go in a restroom, but they would leave the door open, and they would, you'd have your back to them, but they would, they would watch you.
Well, there would be time, like, uh, if there was an accident or something, that you would have to be, you could not just allow this person to walk in and bring this cup back out, somebody would have to know that they didn't.
Yeah.
So.
So just to satisfy.
Some cer- some circumstances where it would, I mean, you know, if it was your, your family member, and there was an automobile accident, and it said, somebody drug, under the, inflicted drugs or alcohol or whatever, and they have to go have a, have it done, you'd want to make sure they didn't go in there and run up.
Well, they're gonna draw blood in that circumstance.
That's right.
That's.
I know we had, you know, two thousand, or two thousand one, we had a, one of the first people I seen, and we had to go, go because they were, see, one of, a good worker, you know, worked for the, might have worked for the transfer, wrote for him, and, um, he came back pregnant. You know, after that TTS, he actually came back, you know, and, uh, you know, and so, they told me, called me, and, you know, told me about it, and I said, well, and what he did, he had a ball around his neck, hanging down, and he kind of, and back then, it was kind of openly, you know, like, on the third week of every, of the month, they were gonna do, you know, he knew it was pretty close, and he had a, he had kept it, because they checked the temperature and everything, I reckon, I'm like, you know, but, uh.
Yeah, they got a temperature strip on the.
He, he knew, he just, he didn't, no argument, he knew what he done, you know, he gone. Sad, but, that's prob- I'm sure that's why, that's, that's, you know, some man since you go watch, you know? I didn't know you could even cheat on it myself, you know?
I'd be too scared, yeah.
Any questions about that, everybody, you know, Robert, you got anything you wanna add?
Since you've got to sign off on it, that's reason us.
Yeah.
Then we'll just do it the same for everybody.
Hmm, yeah. Alright. Alright, let's move down to number ten. Uh, this is our public hearing for FY twenty-four budget on June eighth at five o'clock. Everybody fine, can you, everybody show up? We're doing that at the core.
It's a week from tonight.
Oh, yeah, I'll be.
I cannot, I'll be.
You gonna do it easy?
No, I'll be down with Donald Trump.
Scotty will come get you tonight, if he's watching.
Yeah, I'm over, I'm over, Sky.
Mr. Donald Trump.
I'm going to the GOP convention.
Yes, I'm, I'm good.
We're coming back from North Carolina, real country, but we'll be back in time.
I will be.
I know where you're going, yeah.
Real country.
Alright, everybody's fine with that, we'll write that in our consent agenda. Okay, uh, number eleven, this is public hearing, uh, this is on our USDA Rural Development Community Facilities Grant, um, to equip the, uh, Day County Sheriff's Office Training Facility. Tommy has been working on that diligently, and if you got any questions, you can talk to him about that, about what's going on with that, it's something that you're, uh.
Yeah, basically, the USDA grant, we're trying to get, we've been approved for the first part, and the second part is, I guess we gotta have a public hearing.
Gotta have it, yeah.
Done one of these before, and it's not been real fun, but, uh, Don and.
It's not.
Rebecca over there's helped me quite a bit, so, uh, but it's, we're trying to get the twenty-five thousand for furnishing, like, for the tables.
Yeah.
The, the TV, some of that stuff to help offset some of that cost, and, uh, so, they said we had to have a public hearing.
For the amount of paperwork we've been through, it, we should be getting twenty-five million.
Yeah.
And I'm not exaggerating, am I?
No.
It's a pain, it's been two months worth of paperwork.
Any questions? We appreciate you helping.
And I'll say this, Ted brought this up earlier too, uh, for some reason, out in the community, it's gotten out that that's gonna be an open range for the pub- is not an open range for the public. Uh, what we would like to do eventually, is when we get it set up and stuff, we would like for our firearms instructors, they're asking if we can have some safety classes for the citizens, and.
That'd be great.
You know, that would be something that, you know, we'd all have to sit down and come up with a policy, and get insurance involved, and waivers made up to, to relieve us of the liability from it, and then also, once we get our, um, defensive tactic instructor, once he gets certified, you know, he, he's asking if he can do some classes for, like, self-defense type stuff for some of the citizens, if they want to do it, so. I mean, we want to use it and, and make it useful for the public, but it is not open range for the public, I mean, because we don't want to, you know, there's one weak solid, and, and golf come over there.
I don't get one over there.
Yeah, so, that we qualify at the range, and it happened to be, uh, we were, we're already three, but other than that, you know, there's not really a lot of shooting over there, except for random, we have an open range state where we'll let them come in and shoot, uh, like, different scenario type things. Uh, and some of that'll drop down if we, you know, I'm gonna apply for another grant in July for, uh, if it comes back up, and I think it's going to, for the shooting simulator, so we can put it in that one room, so that'll help too. But yeah, we do want to use it for the public, as long as we're there, and, and so, I don't know where that got out there, but that, that's not.
Patty's won't call me about it, she had some calls about it, for her, because she's HR and all that, so it's just.
And I don't know where that.
Right up front, need to, you know, because of insurance and liability, and all that's gotta be a.
Well, we would like to, you know, invite, you know, people in, and, because, you know, there's a lot of people that want to carry but won't, because they don't know how to shoot, and, you know, we can help with that, some of the churches have asked, uh, when, like, I go to, if we, if they do the security, if they have guns there, uh, they may require them to go through, like, a target, something sort of like we do, a qualification course every year, in order to be able to carry, just for insurance purposes in the church, so, I mean, we don't mind doing stuff like that, but, you know, it's not an open range where people just show up and shoot. So I won't throw that out there.
Okay. Any questions?
Other than that, building's up, I got it painted yesterday, well, windcoat on it, the electrical, me, Casey, and Buddy Waters have got it in, uh, putting insulation in, so, I mean, just moving along, and that's about where we're at.
Looking good, yeah.
Almost ready for a shoot, Rob, if y'all hadn't seen it. You know, just kind of give you an update on it.
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate it, good information. Alright, everybody fine, we're accepting more information, I guess, than anything on the, the public hearing, but, uh, now, we, we, we required to have a call him right at that meeting, that's it. You know?
Wouldn't hurt, but it's not required, but it's not required.
We'll have the.
Oh, a form? No, 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 they're not.
Okay, that's good.
Not for the.
Okay.
No, no.
Alright, then.
First to the commissioner, oh, yeah.
But that's definitely.
Move down to number twelve, now, this is resolution R dash twenty, dash twenty-three, uh, agreement of the local services between hands, uh, ministry and Day County. And Robin, I don't think we ever, we've never got a hold of her, right?
No, I, I, I never did, she was having.
Her mother passed away, and, uh. But we'll probably be able next week, be able to probably have a conference call with her, okay? And that's the people that can answer, of what we can do and can't do, and how much and all that. Pertaining to, uh, the, um, the money there that we just get, we've been, we've talked about, talked about two meetings for the last two meetings, but it's all gonna kind of, uh, circle around what we can do and can't do with it, and that's the money from opioid, uh, opioid money. So we'll know more about it, you know, next week, and actually, we can actually, on one of our, if we wanted to, we find out, we can actually do it before or after one of our, uh, meetings, one of our call meetings, just advertise it, and you know if it comes down to it, okay?
And have we moved those into, uh, those monies into?
I needed that actually placed in the minutes, so that would be, we probably do need them in the agenda to add that, I didn't think about that. Do you, well, the bank requires some kind of, where we say, we need to open an account.
Okay.
That's, I mean, if we can just put that in minutes, I mean, we just need to pull those monies out, it's really not general fund money.
No.
It needs to be separate, so.
Yeah. Everybody fine with that, I mean, I can, I can go and amend it right now.
I mean, we.
And we can put that on.
Okay.
Everybody's fine with, we'll put it on the consent agenda, but first, I need a, I need, not a motion, but I need a, an agreement that we do amend the, uh, format right now, and, and place that on there, if everybody's fine with it.
I agree.
If everybody is, we'll put it on.
And that is to, to move the money into a separate account, a special account?
Yeah. However, we'll get together and share it. They'll probably tell us, all this.
There's a lot of paperwork with this.
Yeah, the, that lady, uh, I've chatted with her at class before, and, and she's, she's really awesome, so. Uh, she, she should be able to even tell you about the banking account and how to handle it too. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, you want to add anything, anybody? Okay, if not, we'll, um, we'll go ahead and adjourn the, you got anything, one more?
The following, not next Thursday, that's our public hearing, but the week after that, let me go to the calendar here, will be the fifteenth, so we'll need to have a special call meeting at five to consider approval for the budget. It's on that schedule.
Fifteenth, yeah.
But just so we make that a public notice, uh, and then we'll, I'll issue something to the paper and everyone, but it'll be Thursday, the fifteenth, at five PM in this room, to consider approval of the budget.
That's my birthday.
And we'll have a birthday cake.
So we're gonna have one on the.
I will probably, hopefully be able to walk.
That's a public hearing.
And it's on the.
Yes. Three days before.
Oh, are you? Uh-oh. Alright.
Well, I had a breakdown to meet.
Anybody got anything else? Uh, there's one other thing I want to, just note, we're not going, but Jennifer, why come up here, man? Lady talk you just meant, if you don't mind? Everybody got quietly.
I knew it was gonna. Everybody get your belt off. Did you wear a belt?
Just want to let the commission know, appreciate you, she was at our meeting last time, and our last meeting, she went to, she heard us talking about our opioid, the problems we're having as far as overdose and all this, and, and yesterday, he brought, uh, brought us ten boxes of, uh, what do you call it, Snob?
Narcan.
Narcan.
Narcan, and, uh, we appreciate you pressing that word to him, appreciate him, you know, he worked for our Public Health Department out of Rome, out of our main office.
That's good.
And, uh, first time I really met him, you know, he came in, and, and, uh, so we appreciate you and appreciate him, because it helps a lot, you know, and, uh, you know, he's.
Saves a lot of lives.
Yeah, and of course, they, they were issued strictly to our police officers, you know, and, so, it's, uh, just telling, we do appreciate the public, you know, and appreciate you.
Appreciate y'all.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, well, go ahead and adjourn our work session, uh, and we'll cut you a quick break, and go back to our, our regular meeting, if you, if everybody's fine with that.
Yes.
Yes.
EMS calls, two hundred and thirty-five emergency fire department calls. And for the police departments, we had twenty-six-hundred-and-eleven calls for a total of three thousand and thirty-eight. So we had a pretty busy month this month or last month. For January, the not well for, for the year, the total E-nine-one-one, one-one addresses are up to forty-three. So we're continuing to grow. The Emergency Road down State Line on Gwen Road, the County Road Department has done just an awesome job getting that cut in there. It's kind of waiting on the telephone poles, got us kind of held up right now, but they're doing what they can do.
Well, yeah, power company, and then we got, we did put the rest of the cell fence up all the way up just today. And I got it, so we're ready to go. We have to, you know, move as we go with that, you know, keep from disturbing anybody else's property. So, and we might have a couple of trees we got to take down, uh, maybe three. Uh, there it's coming out of the bank to give us, we're going, right now, we're going to have about a, about a twelve-foot line, but possibly on part of it, but we'll probably have about a fourteen-foot line, which is plenty if we take these trees down. So it's, it's, it's coming, coming on good.
Yeah, we made room. I'm sure it's not fast enough for the people that live there, but we're making great strides.
No, because since we started it, just this, uh, in the last, well, since Wednesday of last week, the train has blocked it four times. Uh, and anywhere from two to four hours at a time, uh, you know, and so, you know, so it's just, it's, we got, it's needed, we gotta get.
It's gonna get worse, because I think Billy told me, and I don't know where he found this out at, that the railroad has a hundred-and-fifty-car limit right now, but it's fixing to go to a two-fifty. So that will be.
Yeah, leave out a three-mile train, it's about, yeah, something like a two and, two and three-quarters, so.
So if that's true, it's gonna be, get worse. And we've not forgot about Clark Street, it's gonna be a, a lot easier fix than that road was. And of course, it's just right here, right outside the city limits. Well, it's in the city limits, the train starts, isn't it? But.
If we can get about three good days, three good hard, long days of work up there, we can get really close to getting this thing out. Because we're not going to pave, we're going to leave it compacted, uh, you know, rock, and then we'll pave it here in the next year or two. But it'll be a good road for their, and fire trucks, ambulances, and those people to get in and out. And, but we won't get it down, and we'll knock this Clark Street out, which won't take, in two days' time, we get that done. And then we, we're trying to get it done before we start our paving, is what it amounts to. Because once we pull everybody in on this paving, and what we got, it's, it's, you know, we won't stop, you know.
So, we're doing a lot of good for, it's a, not that many folks, but it's, but if you're there, it's very important, and it could be somebody's lives, and that's what we're, that's the business we're in.
Yep.
Protect the lives, so that's, that ends my.
All right. With Hartline.
Uh, at the sports complex, baseball and soccer has finished up their spring season. Uh, the baseball's getting ready for district play. We've got a couple of age groups maybe going to play some fall ball. And then we're trying to get some tournaments for this summer. We did, we had some tournaments lined up, but some, we had some issues with that, and they fell through. Um, Antique Alley, we had thirty, thirty-eight spaces rented out for Antique Alley. Um, I got a few questions and phone calls on that about why we were charging. Uh, I got, I think I told last month, but the reason we charge is to accommodate for the overtime that we have to pay our workers on the, on the weekend. It helps pay for the supplies in the bathrooms and the tracks that we haul off after it's over with. We don't, we're not profiting from it, it's just covering the cost of the people that was there, and the ones that was there seemed to really enjoy being able to use the space for that. Uh, in the month of April, we had thirty-five electrical inspections, and in the month of May, we had twenty-nine electrical inspections. So it's, you know, from the say we're not growing at all, I still does, I don't, I still say the census is wrong, because it shows every month we're getting from ten to twenty inspections every month.
Yep.
That's all I have.
And most of them are houses, or dwellings, they're not just barns and outbuildings, these are.
Yeah, they're all, most of them, all of them need construction.
Yep, yep, that's good. All right. Mr. Gollum.
All right, uh, last month, we were so happy to report on a, what we, still, I still think it was a record on splosh. But we did go back to our old ways this, this month, it's down about eighty-five thousand dollars this month, under last month's, uh, big ones. There's two-hundred-sixty-two thousand, four-hundred-sixty-five, but that's still money that's quite a blessing when these people, uh, all the departments come in needing it, it's just good to have. I do want to say, we talked about it a little bit earlier, the, the Sheriff's Building that's being built down at the, uh, Old Lanfield, and I was called on the day they were over there shooting. So I went over to see what was going on, and they have moved the shooting range over there, which is only makes sense that you have it all. Uh, but for the people that live in that area, it's not an everyday thing. It was quite loud that day, I'm sure, for a few of the, the residents, but they're shooting into a hill, into a bank, there's no danger, uh, because nobody being there, they don't know which way they're shooting. And sound like they were hitting, shooting metal, they said, well, they were. Uh, it's a little tink when that bullet hits it, and, uh, so, uh, but it, it's, it's totally safe, it will be noisy sometimes. Uh, they have to do what they did one time a year, they have to, and it just happened to be that week. And as Tom, Tommy said earlier, that's all in the past, but there will be sporadic, but, uh, not that much going on over there all the time. Uh, it is, Don's put it out about the parking lot out here, we just did the parking lot over here around the gazebo, as far as resurfacing or painting the top of it and re-lining that, and that will be done only, should be done by Sunday to get it done. But if it's not, if the weather doesn't permit, uh, and you're having to come in to pay, uh, you know, buy, buy your car tag, or for some reason to come into this building, you may have to park over there and walk a little way, but it will get done. Hopefully, it's done by then, and, uh, just add, just a little bit, uh, Mr. Hartline was talking about the, the sports complex. Uh, if I remember right, the rec league football signups will begin this Saturday, and for every Saturday in June. Uh, my son's kind of over that, and I should know, but, uh, if you've got a son that, uh, that wants to play, or a daughter, uh, that wants to play football in the Dade County Rec League, then, uh, need to be aware that they do have to sign up, and there's paperwork to be filled out. There is a fee associated with it because of uniforms that they have to buy. Football is probably one of the most expensive, uh, sports that, that our kids play, whether it's high school or, or anywhere else. So, uh, on the Saturdays in June, they will be signing up, so keep that in mind. So, last but certainly not least, uh, the tax notices, uh, this is not a bill, went out this week, or last week maybe, and, uh, I just say this because it's inevitable that there's forty-five days for you to appeal those taxes, and it's inevitable that on day forty-six, somebody will come to a meeting and say this is not right. Please go by the office, the, uh, and, and if you have something that you want to talk with them about or appeal, don't wait till it's too late, and I think that's June the twenty-sixth. Will be the last day that you could file an appeal on your taxes, and then beyond that, it is whatever it is, when the real bill comes out around, uh, October sometime. So, uh, just keep that in mind, and that's part of being here. Thank you.
The appeal that you will be, uh, actually filling out, it has nothing to do with actually that bottom number. This is appealing the value of your property. You know, it's, it's actually, you know, if you disagree with that amount, that you think your property is worth, that's what this time, you know, that's, that's what you go in and fill out, and you've got sort of twenty-six to do that. Like he said, after the twenty-sixth, on the twenty-seventh, you might as well, you know, you, you got another year, you know, until next year. So, you know, be sure to remember that date. Uh, if you, if you have questions, and a lot of people have, they've been in that, I've seen a lot of people coming in, people have talked to them. Uh, Paula is glad to talk to you about it, or you can go in and you schedule a meeting with, uh, with the board, even if you want to go and talk before the board. But I would go talk to Paula, uh, the people in her office first, and, and, and then, and express your concerns, and then, you know, if you don't get any satisfaction, go ahead and, and fill out that form, it's a simple form to fill out, and, and appeal it, you know. Uh, I know that, uh, it's just, uh, because this time out of all, you know, I've, I've really seen some really, um, big numbers that, uh, that increase in the, the property, not only property, but our houses, uh, as per square foot. I think she told me most of houses won at like twenty-five dollars a square foot, I believe what she told me, and, uh, I know mine, mine has won it tremendously, you know. And so, don't be bashful about it, I know you're not, but some people sit back and not, and then they'll think, well, you know, I, I wish I'd went down, and they think about it in twenty-eight, twenty, and it's too late. But take the time to come down here, and I don't mind you coming in the office, I walked in there with you, you know, we're making difference, you know, as far as me putting pressure on her, and I'm, but I'm just saying, I'd be glad to go down there with you, sit down, and we can talk, and she can show you. Because, you know, I would want to see, you know, exactly, okay, how'd you come up with this number? And they didn't just, they don't just pull it out there, they do it by comparisons. Uh, they have, you know, three comparisons, a prompted it sold, uh, within X amount of months or whatever, a year, and the, the sad thing about, well, sad, bad, we don't call it. And, and you can call it good, but we've had a tremendous amount of people, it's, it's still happening, coming out, uh, out of all of the country and buying property in this county and houses, and, um, and they're paying some extremely, uh, extremely high prices for property and the house, houses that they're buying. I mean, uh, it's unbelievable, some of these, uh, of these figures I've seen. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to take away from anybody, I want to get this out.
Well, to add to that, you know, I live by Clowlin Estates and Miller Farms.
Yep.
And those are really big houses, and my house is right next door, but my house is not a very big house, and so my property is, that's what it's compared to, so.
So it's just, uh, it is, uh, it's a big deal, not only to all of you, because we work for you, but we, we're taxpayers too. And so, uh, I'm concerned with it, and, and, and someone said yesterday, and I agree, you know, we, there's got to be a, a, a line drawn some way, and, and I assure you, we're, we're looking at every avenue that we can, as far as, um, the governing authority, to see what we can and what can be done, if, if anything, you know. Uh, but, uh, just, uh, don't we, you know, just come in anytime, that's what we do, you know, we're public servants, and we'll, we'll, we'll do everything and try to, you know, help you find out, uh, information on where that number, that bottom number come from. Not, not on the bottom of your taxes, because it's an estimated amount, they don't even really need to be, but on the value of your home, uh, that it is appraised at today. Go ahead, Ms. Bradford, I'm sorry.
You're good.
Another thing I'd add too. Another thing I would add to the appraisals is if you have internet on, or, or a telephone, you can go to Day Q Public. If you're going to appeal the property values of your home, serving on the tax board, I know you can't live in Wildwood and compare to somebody in Rising Pond or one of the mountains. You need to be within a mile radius, but you can look up your neighbor, you can look up just about anybody, you can see what their taxes are, what they're paying, what their home is valued for. I think it's Day Q Public.
Just go to Dade County Tax Assessor, and then you, they'll come up and just look and read, and they'll say.
They search records.
Yeah.
And if you know your address, you can see everything about your house, and then they got a map on there that says map. You click on map, and you can click on your neighbor's property, and you can keep clicking through, and you can see what other people charge. It's a tool to make sure that uniformity is happening.
Yeah, you can go back, what, three years, four years, I think, three years, and then you see what your property, of course, but you can go back and see your neighbor's property, and how much this actually either went down or, or up, you know, all those years, and, and do a comparative beyond, you know, around your area, you know.
And make sure that you're taking advantage of the things that we have got, like the property tax freeze, make sure you're taking advantage of that. Make sure you're signed up for it, because if you signed up ten years ago, like I did on my house, it was valued at, I think, a hundred-and-thirty or forty thousand, I can't remember exactly. But now it's paid over two-hundred thousand, or right at two-hundred thousand. But I'm only paying on a hundred-and-thirty-four because my, I'm locked in on that freeze. And we did that because of people that were moving, we were, back then, we were calling on halfbacks, they were moving from the north to Florida, and then they get tired of Florida, the expenses, and they were moving halfway back, which is around here, so. But that's why it was done, it, so you wouldn't be priced out, like Melissa with a big development right beside her, if she's locked her property in a long time ago, and, and you can still do it if you hadn't, it's not age requirement. Anything, it's if you own property, you can put a free, you can inactivate that freeze, and it will help, it's a big, good help.
Go ahead, Ms. Bradford.
Okay. Well, I don't have much, um, I wanted to talk about the tire amnesty, even though I was not there, and I appreciate everybody that was and helped out. Um, it seemed to, to be a good turnout, we had a little more than, than last year, um, and there's a picture, so, everybody working hard. It sounded like it was a somewhat okay day.
No, it was good, it was a really good.
Overcast and weather was good, so glad to hear that, uh, hated to miss it. Um, and then, uh, we still are working on, um, getting some, some numbers. Um, the program that, uh, we put in is working really, really well, it's helping us to see, um, places that we need to fix a little bit at the transfer station, and see what is working. Um, this month of May, uh, uh, thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-six people went through the scales and through the transfer station that we were able to, to tag. Uh, that's one-point-six million, um, pounds, which is, is, is high this month, so that's, that's pretty awesome. Um, and we sent out the letter for charging businesses, is that correct?
They on, on cardboard?
On cardboard.
That's the one.
Yeah, I, I haven't heard any complaints or anything, uh, has the office heard anything?
I know they were verbally also called too, you know, the ones that were what we call our heavy hitters, you know, and, and it is what it is, you know, I've not had anybody approach me about it negatively, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's just a.
And it seems, it seems to be working, working well, so that's a, that's a very positive for us. So we're going to keep working, um, on this program, and as we see things that are ki- kind of need to be worked on, we're, we're going to keep biting at it and making it better, so. That's all I got.
All right, okay. I've got a few things, been a pretty busy month, you know, we actually are, and Dawn and Becca's been working hard, and, uh, I'm actually getting everything prepared on budget, you know, and our, uh, we're kind of, as Dawn said a while ago, we've got a, a couple of hearings coming up, you know, and this is the important part of the, of the tax, or the year, as far as the tax cycle and all of that, because this is when we put everything together, put the numbers together, and, uh, we decide, you know, on our mileage rate, you know, and, uh, you know, which is an important thing, you know, even though we are, you know, the school board is, is, is very important, because there's seventy-plus percent of your taxes you pay at the bottom there, uh, if you look at your tax bill, and we get the other portion to run the county. So, um, it's time of the year, you know, it's, uh, it's really a, a wearisome, wearisome trial some time, you know, for us, um, because we, we do, uh, do the, uh, the best job we can do, uh, to be fair with everyone, and we got to have enough money to operate the county and still keep taxes down. And we've done that over the years, and we're going to do it again this year, you know, I mean, whatever it takes, uh, of course, we'll, uh, these public hearings, that's what it's all about, and, um, you're there. We've made the announcement tonight, be on our website, I'm sure she's already posted in newspapers, so they're all open to public, and that's what a public hearing is for. And then we try to do it, uh, real, uh, informal, uh, and don't feel, you know, you can feel comfortable getting them talking to us, uh, you know, ask us questions, that's what it's for. So, uh, we want everyone that's got questions or issues, especially the one where we have, and all the elected officials will be in this room, sheriff, most, everyone representing DA is officer, and, 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 you know, we got questions, we can ask them, or if you've got questions, uh, you can ask that at that time publicly, and they'll stand up and, you know, uh, because the, but the, it'll be published before, where you can look at that, and look at the line items, where you can look and see, uh, you know, exactly what they're asking for, what they are that night, that's when we discuss it. So, uh, just want to add that. But anyway, uh, the tire day, if I'll go into that, that was a good day, you know, we had, um, we had less, we, we've been having a little bit less every year, and, uh, we were at Walker County Data Meeting at Robert and I with, uh, the DA and Shannon Whitfield, and, and that subject was brought up, and, um, they were the same way. They, that shows that what we're doing is working, you know, I mean, it's getting less every year, so people are running with less and less tires, so that's a good thing. They were like half of what they, uh, normally get, uh, in Walker County, and I know the first year, you said, they had the seven, around seven thousand tires, um, that was brought in the first year, seventy-five-hundred, something like that, and then it dropped down, and then dropped down, so, um, and, uh, you know, and, and it's, it's good, you know, and it's good, people appreciate it. Uh, there was no incidents, and all the weather was good, and, uh, we, uh, let's see here, we got, um, the building, I was going to touch on the building there, you know, we're, we're working on, uh, with Tommy over there. Uh, Tommy's really been, uh, working hard over there himself, Tommy Bradford, and, and had trustees now over there, and it's, uh, saving a tremendous amount of money, this grant they're going after is saving us money, and it's going to be a really good facility, um, and it'll be, uh, be something that we can only, we can also use, uh, you know, as far as not just our county, but, uh, we'll be able to actually bring some of the other counties in and generate a little bit of revenue off of it too, you know, from doing training that we're having to go, you know, three counties over to do, we can actually do that here, which, you know, uh, is a good thing. And, uh, so they're all, they're all excited about that. Uh, we've got, uh, and Mr. Lowery touched on the Steel Road project, that's a, that's coming to, kind of to a head, we're really moving on that. Uh, it's, it's looking really good, those people are so proud, you know, and, uh, it, it's, uh, it's kind of gotten to a point, as I said over the months, you know, it's scary, because, you know, you can imagine being home over there, and you did have a medical emergency, had a heart attack or whatever, and there's no way we could get, could get into you, I mean, without walking, going under the train, and if we had to transport you to hospital, you'd have to be handed through or under the train. There's nowhere to, to land the helicopter, you know, so this is the only entrance. Thank goodness the railroad is working with us, uh, which is a smart thing, because they're getting, they've been getting a lot of negative publicity throughout the United States, and they've stepped forward on this right here, and also on this other road that we've got on Clark Street down here, that's, uh, going to be, uh, been a way out for them also. So, uh, this is a great thing, you know, and a lot of people just take it, and they say, well, because, you know, you don't travel that, but if you lived over there, and you were one of those like twenty families, twenty households, you know, it, it can get scary, I mean, really. Uh, and school bus, and I've said this, you know, I've got some pictures, it's just, just passing these kids through a train sitting there, you know, they don't even have any idea whether it's going to roll or not, and you're handing them school buses, let them off, and their grandparents and their parents says, you know, this, this don't get it, it's not, should never happen. Uh, we did have a good meeting, uh, today with, uh, Ms. Shannon Whitfield and their, our new DA. Um, I do want to mention him, he, uh, at the Memorial Day event, uh, out here Saturday, uh, they decided to have it on Saturday instead of Memorial Day, and, uh, we had a decent turnout, not as many as, as normal, but the key speaker was, uh, the DA, our new man, and, uh, I'd never heard him really, uh, speak, you know, and, and he is really, if you get a chance, uh, to hear him talk, regardless of that, he's a very good speaker. And he spoke on, uh, a lot of issues there with the veterans, he is still an active, you know, um, armed forces person, he's in the, I can't remember, he said he was Air Force Reserve or whatever, but he's actively, you know, still involved, and, um, very smart person. And today, we had the meeting over there with him, and, uh, uh, it was pertaining to things that's coming up with his budget, you know, things that, and he had never really met, uh, Shannon Whitfield, uh, and so I kind of arranged that, Robert and I did, to go there, and it was really a, a really great, great meeting. I mean, really, you know, he's, uh, a very sincere person, and he's a Dade County person, and, uh, he's, um, he's also a taxpayer, and, uh, he's really, uh, he's got his head on his shoulders, he really is there for the right reason, uh, not only as a DA, but, uh, as, you know, uh, the way we look at it, we, we are interested in that budget, because he could be, you know, he's got a lot of high-dollar people that work for him, they're attorneys, and so we, uh, but I think he really, uh, talking to him today, he's down to earth, and I don't think he's going to expect any more than he, you know, than really, uh, overly, uh, requests, uh, for, for money. So, uh, it was good, did, did you get the same feeling, Robert? I mean, he's, he's really, you know, he's sharp, you know, and, uh, he lives here in the county, like I said, he's a Dade County, and so that's a good thing.
What is his name?
Yeah, uh.
Clay Fuller.
Clay Fuller, you know, he was, he worked for the DA's office for about three years, he said, and then, uh, that, when the governor appointed him, um, he, of course, took, uh, you know, they moved it, kind of shifted, our DA now, that's a judge, he's a spirit court judge, and, uh, so, uh, it was a good, it was a good move, a good choice. I mean, he, you can, you know, he, he really is going to fit, and of course, that is just to fill the expired term, and then he'll have to run for election, he'll be running for election for the DA's position in, uh, November of next year.
Okay.
Yeah, so, uh, anyway, but, uh, real quick, and I'm jabbering here, but, uh, we, uh, the, we've had, you know, some complaints, we get complaints all the time, but it, it's getting, this is getting kind of serious too, but on this two-ninety-nine traffic up there, if you don't live up there, don't travel that road, especially when the freeway's set down, or anything happens up during the evenings, uh, and you're trying to get out two-nine-nine-eleven, or eleven-two-ninety-nine, uh, it's ridiculous. And I've got another meeting set up with the grant, Walter, he's our area engineer, I've had him up there twice, uh, and I think they, I've got some pretty good pictures and video made the other day, and they're going to have to do something, either going to have to, I don't know, I don't know, it's going to take a red light or whatever, but it's, uh, it's so, the traffic just comes to a stop, and you can't even get out on eleven, and then you've got these people coming off the interstate. So that is really a really hot topic right now, you know, uh, in Dade County, especially on the north end up there, and, um, but we're going to, Lamar and I, we're going to meet with him, hopefully, he didn't tell me today, uh, for next week, but next week, we're going to get him up here and try to get some answers out of him, because he, he is, he is the area, he's over all the engineering, uh, was heated, uh, over in Northwest Georgia, so he's a man that can make it, the recommendation, and make it happen. So, uh, for you, you people up there that live there, trust me, we are working on, I mean, it's, 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 we're, we're, we're on your side, trust me on this one. Uh, the, um, we've had a meeting over there yesterday, uh, Billy and I had to meet with the Cold City people over there that's doing the rock removal over there, they've tore, you know, we paved the road this past summer, and there's the sections of it that, uh, it's not real bad yet, but it's fixed, it could be, and, um, it, it gets worse, especially with heat with the summer here. Uh, they've agreed that whatever it takes, they're going to actually dig out and repair any of that and put it back, uh, as good or better than, than it was. Uh, it was a real good meeting, they, they really were good people to work with. Marion County, they paved the road in the Cold City, uh, that part of it, they've re, you know, actually repaired it, and it's, it's in pretty good shape. So for you people over there, that's, uh, that's what's happening right now. Uh, a lot of you have never been to Cold City or what's that, but that's, you know, we've got several, several families that live there, you got to go into Tennessee, come down the river to come back into it, and it's where the axle corner of Georgia is at, it's where the point, where the three points come together, Alabama, Georgia, Tennessee, and, uh, we do have several families that live in there, and so, um, but anyway, that's, um, that's been, I've been taking care of as we speak. Um, let me see if there's anything else I need to talk to you about. Um, soon as we finish up with these roads, like I said a while ago, we, we're ready to start our paving, uh, they're all running asphalt now, or our, our blend anyway. Uh, did want to remind you, like Robert, tack the, the appeal deadline, remember, is June the twenty-sixth, and let me think. Sure, do, 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 do. Anything else y'all, y'all thought about while I've been jabbering off here? Okay, if not, we'll move on then, I, I thought I had, have another thing I want to, anyway, we'll move on down into our appearances, and Ms. Sandy White, uh, Director and CEO of the Alliance for Dade, or a Chamber of Commerce, come, her and George is here tonight.
Yes. Yeah. I just want to say, uh, first of all, thank you for having us, uh, but secondly, uh, our Board of Directors is really happy that we have found Sandy. She has done a wonderful job since she's been here, been here six months, and she's just going to share with you this evening some of the things that we've accomplished, and not, certainly not all of them, so thank you, Sandy.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Okay. Um, this is just going to be an update, mainly a tourism update, um, and we've got things going on, and hopefully, you've seen some of these. Um, but first, I want to give you the, um, May Welcome Center figures, and actually, those are, um, since we have to, um, give the report, um, a week before, I do have some updated numbers. Um, instead of seventeen residents, we had twenty-two as of today, that's five additional, um, visitors, uh, we are seeing a lot more visitors, instead of thirty-four, we now have fifty-seven visitors that have come in, um, for the month, and then thirty-nine calls, so that's up nine. Um, these are some of the printed in, uh, information that we have out now, um, we're working on some more. Um, since there was not any kind of visitor guide, um, or anything like that, we did print a RAC card, which you've seen before, um, back early on, that's been distributed out, um, all over town, as well as, um, the surrounding communities, uh, state, um, visitor centers, that kind of thing. Um, we are in the process of putting together a thirty-two-page, um, visitor guide that will be the same size, that four-by-nine, excuse me, um, but it will be, um, thirty-two panels, and it will have, um, information about all the, the events and activities and, um, attractions and things to shop, visit. about all the, the events and activities and attractions and things to shop, visit, lodging, whole nine yards on Dade County, and so, real excited about that, hopefully that'll be out by the end of the month. But in the meantime, we did in-house do a lodging list, shopping and restaurant guide, as well as the QR codes that you see in the middle, that are on our map, that's to the far right, as well as we had this in the visitor center so that anybody who could just download those on their, on their phone and get that information, so they know what to, what to see and do and, and places to go in the county. Also, this is some of the advertising we've done so far in the state travel, the State Parks Travel Guide, that park guide, the digital side sees over 45 million views, and so that, we have a full page ad in that. To the far left is the Georgia Great Places magazine, that is also a, a State Parks publication that comes out twice a year and we'll, we've got a two-page spread there and we'll have another two-page spread coming up in the next one, coming out. And then also, the one in the middle is for the Discover Georgia Outdoors Guide, which is a fairly new guide, it's been out a few years, but it really is catered to people hiking, biking, outdoor activities, which of course we have a lot of, and so not only do we have an ad there, we also have, they have our, they have an app that has all of our hiking trails, hiking, biking trails in it, and so that's coming out. We also are doing some Facebook digital ads now that are, that you'll see, we'll be doing some more digital stuff later on as well as some more print ads. Also too, we've done this in-house, but we now have some sample itineraries, trip itineraries, so we have those available at the visitor center, we are making those available to anybody who is interested in those, as well as, I just went to a, a small tourism expo in Gordon County and was there with part of the Regional Travel Association, we gave out the RAC cards and several different things, but they really loved the itineraries, so I handed out a lot of itineraries there, so that's again, another way to show people what we have available. We also are doing postcards, so we have postcards in the visitor center now that we have available, so anybody wanting to take a memento back, they can take a postcard. And then again, these numbers have changed a little bit since the 24th, but we're really pushing things out on our Facebook and Instagram, and we're really seeing a lot, we're trying to, to take anything that the community is a community event or, or anything that our investors have going on business-wise, that the, the public would like to see or know more about, we're, we're making sure that gets pushed out on the, on Facebook, and so we've really increased, we started off with the reach about 3,500 when I got here and we're now, as of today, we're over 19,000 in our reach, and, and then we are also seeing about seven, 70 new likes on a, on our page, on our post in a week, and we're up with page likes, 57 from 557 on the 24th, we're now up 19 more and then about 32 more followers from the 735 as of a week ago, so that will continue to increase. You might say, well, you know, why is this important? Well, Facebook is what people look at, especially locally, but also the visitor, and so this is, this is a way to get, push that information out, it's inexpensive and it's, it's just a good way it works, so as y'all have seen with a lot of other things going on in the county, people look at Facebook, so we're going that way too. So we have, we had a Tourism Week promotion, which was the beginning of the month, and we asked people to be a tourist in their own hometown. It went over well, a lot of people saw it, had, had some participate, and so we had some winners, but what we, basically the whole purpose of that was just to get that information out in front of local citizens, so they would, you know, they would use the, the attractions that visitors come here for already, and so, you know, it's always good to, to just kind of be reminded of, of the wonderful gifts that we have here in, in all the attractions and things that we have in the county, so. And our winners, we had Ms. Mia Burnfin, she gave us some pictures of some of her sites, and then the crew at Trenton Pressing, they went out and took a picture of there at the Flight Park, and they've been to the Alpaca Farm since then, so they're getting out and about, and so it's just a fun way to, to show people what wonderful assets we have here. And we also are trying to work with people on a state level and regionally collaboration so that we can help support not only our businesses in the community, but also the sites that we have. We did host a Northwest Georgia Travel Association meeting here at Cloudland Canyon, and we are going to be participating in their travel guide there, as well as we also participate, there's a 17 hikes challenge that the association does, and one of our sites, one of our hikes at Cloudland Canyon, Canyon is part of that, so again, we get exposure every time that those things are out there, and then also with Georgia Groan, that helps with our, our agritourism. We have several, several businesses in the community that are agritourism related, and so Georgia Groan is really good about helping, Georgia Groan is with the, with the Department of Agriculture, and so we partner with them to help those agribusinesses support. Also too, with the funding that, that y'all help us with, we were able to distribute so far over $12,000 in advertising promotion and signage for not only events that we put on, but other events throughout the, the county, so, and the most recent, we're helping market the 1945 Fair, so we're really excited about that and getting ready for that, but anyway, and that money is available to anybody who, who all they've got to do is request, we have a simple little form to fill out, but we, you know, that's what we're in the business to do, is to help promote the activities here in the county. Some of the things I've mentioned, the visitor guide coming up, we're, we are doing more ads digitally and otherwise, we also are going to be doing some upgrades to the website, we're hoping to do an interactive map on the website by the end of the year, and, and then for the future, this might come sooner than later or may take a little while, but some of the things that we're hoping to be able to do is maybe add banners downtown and do some familiarization tours, not only for like the state visitor center people so they know more about what's in the community, but also locally. I'm hoping that maybe next year, but just before the, kind of the tourism season starts, we can have a little tourism expo ourselves that cannot, that can show the community, that's open to the community, so they can see, you know, what there is, what the tourism businesses are in the community, what the assets are, and, and just give them a, you know, a little heads up before the tourism season starts. More tourism promotions like the Tourism Week one, we'll do those, and hopefully this will be a bigger project, but hopefully down the road we can do some wayfinding signage for the whole county that can really help direct people where things are, so. Any questions?
Any questions?
No.
We get a report though.
Thank you.
A lot going on, yeah.
Appreciate it.
Oh, we did, Jifa had their meeting at, at the golf course and we took them on a tour of Dade County, kind of while they were here, and they were very impressed with what they saw.
They really were, yeah.
Good, good, I mean, it's a beautiful county.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay. Audrey, you got anything you want to report on, anything, any activity on bank doings or anything that you might want to say? I don't know, we appreciate you coming to our meetings, you know, and nothing much.
Just as everybody knows, interest rates have begun to change and will probably change some more, but we're still doing.
How much they go down?
[laughing]
We don't know bad news, we want good news.
Right. But no, one thing, and this is nationally, that everybody needs to become even more cautious about scams, we're seeing in every direction, debit cards, credit cards, phone call scams, and seemingly some of them are becoming better and better at pulling these things off, and it's not just affecting the elderly anymore. So if anyone should call you and ask for any private information, never give account numbers, social security numbers, if you feel skeptical at all, just don't answer any questions, because like social security company office, they will not be calling people and verifying the social security number or telling them to call another number. That's just one of many, many things, and we are seeing a big increase in all the scams, email scams, you name it. And, and one thing that we've learned, or I've learned recently, we all know that gas stations are one of the main target areas where they put those little machines and card readers and all, so if you can ever tap to pay, that's a more secure way of paying for gas or, or whatever, because it's harder so far for, for them to get access to that, they can't, you know, with the machines, they put those little things in there that reads the cards. So anything that feels uncomfortable as far as a question that comes across your computer from our bank, the bank you bank with, or, or anything, just about anything, be very, very cautious before you give out any information.
That's good information, really good. Okay, you know.
I got one from Walker County, it showed up on my phone, it's Walker County Sheriff.
Right.
Of course, I don't answer them, I, I let them go to, if they go to voicemail, I let them go to, but it wanted you to, after you listened to the voicemail, it wanted you to push one to stop the transmissions or two to connect, well, if you match one or two, you're agreeing to something on that phone that's not, and it wasn't Walker County Sheriff, I'm sure.
I don't know, he was asking questions about him over the day, wasn't the sheriff? He might be looking for you, Lamar.
They'll have to, they'll have to come get you.
They just called him that Lowery guy.
That Lowery guy, yeah. Appreciate it, appreciate you sharing that with us. Okay, move down here to Mr. Townsend, Chief Financial Officer, if you would give us a financial report, please.
As of May 31st, 2023, the general fund had a balance of $1,605,305. Total certificates of deposit on hand were at 1.5 million, so we have a balance of $3,105,305. Federal Asset Fund, US Treasury Zero, Share Special Fund, $7,212, Drug Abuse Education Fund, $8,349. Supplemental Juvenile Services Fund, $28,800, Victim Assistance Fund, $1,308, Jail Fund, $9,406, Federal Asset Fund, Department of Justice Zero, American Rescue Plan, ARPA is $1,523,212, Accommodations Hotel Tax, $255,202, Employee Flexible Spending Account, $10,124, Payroll Account, $79,829. In the 2015 SPOST, we still have $97,618, in the 2021 SPOST funds, we have under the Projects Account, $118,558, and the Proceeds Account, $2028,874. Looking at the next report, as of April 30th, in our revenues, we see for the month of For the month, we had estimated $660,835, so we were in excess funds of, sorry, $8,610, and for the year-to-date, we've collected $11,985,756. Again, budgeted year-to-date, it's $11,620,137, so we were in excess so far of funds of $365,619. As far as expenses for the month of April, we saw those come in at $994,490, we had budgeted $1,029,202, budget was under budget by $34,511 for the month of April. Year-to-date, we've expensed $11,118,613, we've budgeted $11,234,059, so again, under budget, 11, I'm sorry, $115,464. Budget attained so far through this month is 83.33%, revenues attained were at 90.02%. Expenses attained were at 81.97%. SPOST, the Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax Collection for the month came in at $262,465.72, and the Local Option Sales Tax came in at $248,984.84. You'll see the next report is the SPOST, the 2021 SPOST Tracking Worksheet, and there's no major change there, everything's on par, and then we also see the Projects Account as well as the summaries regarding the Proceeds Account. And then the filing, the 2015 SPOST Tracking Worksheet is attached there, and let me make that a little bit smaller, and you can see that, that's still waiting on those fire departments, I was looking back to get Ross, Rodney Ross's attention, but, so we still have some money there that we can utilize if it looks like we need to. And also, the Tax Commissioner's Report, this is through May 3rd, I'm sorry, no, this is through April 30th, from July 1st through April 30th. We've collected $5,261,147, still got about $234,352 to go, that's right at 95.74% for the year, so that's looking pretty good, and I would say that we'll be collecting that, probably some extra with the interest and penalties once they're added on, if there are any, after, if someone's paying taxes in arrears. That concludes the report.
Okay. Any questions, concerns or corrections, okay. If not, I entertain a motion to approve our financial report as represented, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve is read.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, second, call with Mr. Lowery.
Yes.
Tartline?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Bradford?
Yes.
Chairman, yes, motion carries. Robin, you got anything for us tonight, any, anything that's going on?
No, I don't, Mr. Chairman.
Other than, you know, you reported on the OPIO, we've got that set up, but hopefully next week we can do that call with her, so that's, okay. Unfinished business, new business. Okay, the reading of the minutes of our last month's regular meeting and any special call meetings will not be required since all commissioners have been furnished copies in advance, managed for public record and available for review in our County Commission Office, and the minutes are included in our consent agenda. At this time, Mr. Townsend, would you please go over consent agenda, and I'll entertain a motion pertaining to that, please.
All right, we have the approval of the agenda as amended, writing item number 13, approval of the previous meeting minutes, the review of the personal status report, we have Resolution R-24-23, a reappointment to the Department of Family and Children's Services Board, Mrs. Tanina Boss for a five-year term commencing July 1st, expiring June 30th, 2028. We have Resolution R-25-23, a reappointment of a member to the Historic Preservation Commission from the county, and that is Mrs. Sarah Moore for a three-year term commencing July 1st, 2023, expiring June 30th, 2026. We have the Resolution R-27-23, a reappointment to the Public Library Board of Trustees, and that's Mrs. Lisa Cagle for a three-year term commencing July 1st, 2023, expiring June 30th, 2026. Resolution R- term commencing July 1st, 2023, expiring June 30th, 2026. Resolution R-28-23, the appointment to the Public Library Board of Trustees, to fulfill the unexpired term of Mr. Tad Everett, by the appointment of Mr. Steve Forster, to the unexpired term commencing July 1st, 2023, expiring June 30th, 2025. The approval under ARPA expenditures to the company Callahan Mechanical of Chattanooga, for the total proposal of one hundred and eighty-four thousand, nine hundred and forty-six dollars for any HVAC units at the Dade County Public Library. The Historic Courthouse Preservation, I'm sorry, Historic Courthouse Restoration Project Report is given by Mr. James Blevins of BCM Inc. The Agreement for Field Print Equipment Corporation Owner Application for Finger Printing Hardware and Software was approved at this evening's meeting. Resolution R-26-23, Addendum to the Zero Tolerance Drug and Alcohol Policy for FTA Employees, is approved with Amendment to Part 40.67, Page 4, to provide that directly observed collection will be by oral swabs for all employees. Let's see, Resolution, oh, Announcement of a Public Hearing, Proposed FY24 Budget on June 8th, 2023, at 5:00 p.m., a public hearing for the USDA Rural Development Community Facilities Grant to Equip Dade County Sheriff's Office Training Facility on June 12th, 2023, at 10:00 a.m. And the amended agenda item that was added is to remove funds from the general fund into a separate account, and those funds are from the Dade County, Georgia's proceeds for the National Opiate Settlement. That concludes the.
Okay. Any questions, corrections, or anything? All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda that's presented. Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay. Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Oh, second.
Thank you, Mr. Bradford. All right, have a motion, second, and call a vote. Mr. Lowery?
Yes.
Tortline?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Mr. Bradford?
Yes.
Chair votes, yes. Motion carries. Okay. Don't have anything on his exercise. I will mention this, though, and Carrie, I don't know whether you've got this online yet or not, but the barbecue at Rising Pond, they have one once a year. Do you have that date? I need, I need, I think it's this next, this coming weekend on Saturday. I'm ninety percent sure. They put the banner up the other day, and I didn't, I didn't notice it till we, but anyway. But it's always a good event, and get there early, you know, because it does, they do run out just about every year, and it's really, really good barbecue. So, I'll try to have, we'll have information for that. She put that online, maybe tonight or tomorrow, and you can look that up, but.
I believe the banner has tenth on it, which would be not, not this Saturday, but the next Saturday.
Second, be the second Saturday then, yeah. Okay. But anyway, just kind of keep those, because that is one of their biggest fundraisers. And they do always have a good turnout, so we do appreciate it. Y'all got anything else you want to bring up?
You can eat there, carry it with you.
Oh, yeah, they fix it. You can call in. It's in the phone book, or it's on the line, the phone number, and have it ready. They can have it ready when you get there. So, but anyway, appreciate everyone staying here with us tonight. Y'all got anything else you want to bring up? Okay. If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, I have a second.
Second.
Call a vote, Mr. Lowery?
Yes.
Tortline?
Yes.
Mr. Goff?
Yes.
Mr. Bradford?
Yes.
Chair votes, yes. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.